Good morning. We now go into our regularly scheduled session, council session. We'll be led in prayer by Madam Clerk, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by roll call by Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk?
Oh God of might, wisdom and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, Peter Fag, United States of America, and Peter Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilors Williams?
Here.
West?
Present.
Jacobs?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present. Move for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. We now open up the airways, Facebook for public comments. Mr. Solicitor?
Your Honor, there are several public comments, and it's unclear whether they pertain exclusively to the agenda, action items only or not, so my recommendation would be to read them now in advance of the meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
The first public comment is from Joan Broadfield, residing at 2430 Lindsay Street, Chester, PA 19013. The subject is "Public Comment for Meeting Today." I heard recently that the mayor is advocating a contract with Covanta. In addition, there is a lot of talk from City Hall about the cleanup. Yet Covanta has continued, even after their pandemic issues, to include the blue cans in trash rather than recycle when the blue cans are out and they miss the pickup at recycle day. And the city recycling makes no attempt to track how well we residents are sticking with, quote, "no bags and recycle," end quote rule. That means the city gets less funding. Nor have I experienced any community-wide engagement concerning cleanup. I just see threats, punishment, no engagement to be involved as a community. Why are some spots magnets for large trash piles? Question mark. Why does the city only use city workers and trucks for curbside requests? Question mark. I have, in fact, called and emailed about this. Calls got answered two times, though I called more emails never. I see no reason to continue with Covanta, and I do not know why the city does not do more to push compliance for recycling and engage more with citizens in a collaborative way to help our city to be more trash-free.
I'm going to start off to try to answer Ms. Broadfield, then I'm going to pass it on to Councilwoman West. Let me start off by saying, thank you for your comments, Ms. Broadfield. We are not... I don't know what you mean by a contract with Covanta. So that is incorrect information. I don't know who provided you with that information, but that is incorrect. As far as our community cleanup, we just did a month-long cleanup that was headed up by Councilwoman Portia West. We went throughout this community with each department, police department, fire department, parks department, streets department, even members of the finance department. Went throughout this community, myself and all of my colleagues, picking up other people's trash. Because we believe in this community. We want to make sure we keep this community clean. And our collective departments did an excellent job, an excellent job, going out into the community to help make our community a cleaner area. Our hope is that, folks, if you see something, say something. If you see people dumping in our community, you need to say something so that we can address that. We have our police app, where you can go online on our police app and simply take the number down, take a license plate down, and you can do this anonymously. And so we're seeking help from our community when it comes to keeping our community clean. Councilwoman?
With regard to the recycling, we do know that we... The city does get some type of reimbursement for the amount of tonnage that we report every year. Mr. Richard Knox is our recycling coordinator, and he keeps track of the tonnage information that we get from our trash vendor, JP Mascara. So we do have a report on that that we provide every year. So if you have any questions, you can call in at 610-447-7700 and ask for Mr. Richard Knox, our recycling coordinator. To piggyback off of what the mayor said, we too, I too, would like to encourage the community to, if you see something, call the police. Unfortunately, we don't have cameras throughout the city, so we can't see what's going on, you know, when people are dumping. And there are some people, violators, who take this opportunity either early in the morning or late at night. And then sometimes it's done during the day. And we are asking people that if you see someone, get the color of the truck. A license plate would be fine if you can. We don't want you to put yourselves at risk, but we need your help, too. If I... Where I live, in my neighborhood, or any other neighborhood that I'm in, if I see someone that's violating the trash ordinance, then I'm going to call and report it. And that's what I'm encouraging the community members to do. Thank you.
Solicitor. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, the next public comment is from Danine Mosley, 2011 West 7th Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. Morning, Anye. Please ensure my questions are presented to council today. Number one, why is council seeking to continue a trash contract with Mascara when the service thus far has been deplorable? Lowest bidder doesn't mean guaranteed extension of a contract when there's a history of poor performance. Key word is responsible bidder. Two, why is council looking to violate its own parking contract that they voted and put in place that could jeopardize the city even further financially by pursuing this residential parking resolution, which is against the receiver's recommendation? Did council review the current contract even before considering the current resident's parking resolution? Three, why does it appear that council is not receiving correspondence sent to the mayor and solicitor from the receiver's office per Councilwoman Jacobs' own comments on tape 413?
Let me start off by saying, my understanding, Ms. Mosley, I usually don't answer questions from persons who live out of state. But I'll answer yours this time. The trash contract, which is in Chester, Pennsylvania, not Delaware, is done with Mascara. We had two bidders. This was the lowest responsible bidder. Quite frankly, it was $2 million lower. As you know, we are in a COVID situation whereby persons are home, and they're putting out more trash than ever. And so we've been in a catch-up mode, and we... Quite frankly, we're caught up. This contract is for the next five years. We appreciate the work that Mascara has done thus far. They've had workers who have gone out into the community, who have contracted COVID, and they've lost their own workers. We've had folks from our city who are now hired. I've even seen some women on the back of the trash truck, which I applaud. And so if you look at what's going on here in the city of Chester and the state of Pennsylvania, it's just like Delaware. Everybody has more trash because they're home. They're cleaning out their homes. They're home, they're buying more groceries, so therefore, they're producing more trash. As far as our residential parking here in Chester, Pennsylvania, I'm sure they have the same in Delaware. Residential parking is for those persons in our community who are finding hardships when it comes to them trying to find a place to park. As I stated yesterday, and I'm pretty sure you were in on that meeting, as I stated yesterday, I wonder what it would be like for if it was my mother, your mother, my grandmother, your grandmother, your grandfather, coming home from work or coming home, not being able to find the place to park at their home. And when they do come home, and they find themselves confronted by an angry person who doesn't even live in their neighborhood. We're talking about areas like Nova Vista, where seniors live. And in the same area is Crozier Hospital. Now, Crozier's in the upland. And Crozier Hospital workers park in the Nova Vista area. And when they park in Nova Vista area, they take the parking spaces of seniors. Sometimes they even park in front of their driveways. We've been working on this for almost three years. And so we're going to take care of our seniors today. We made a commitment, we made a promise, and we're going to do what we need to do for our seniors today. We appreciate the comments and the work that... Things that were said by the receiver. But at the same time, we have to govern. And we're committed to doing just that. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jacobs, Councilman Jacobs, to deal with the correspondence.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Mosley, I am absolutely ecstatic that there are people tuning into the advisory committee with the receiver and his team, and myself and the mayor. When we first started out, that meeting would last about two minutes. And to me, it was worthless. So now that I know that people are actually listening, I'm glad you brought up what my statement yesterday about not having the correspondence from the receiver, not having seen it. I didn't mean that with my colleagues, because they checked their emails. I was simply trying to highlight and underscore the fact that we don't have any administrative assistance. In other words, executive secretaries. So mayor and council are left on their own, so I miss a lot of things. And this is a message to the receiver. We've been trying to... We have one AA, and she's out for two weeks because she tested positive for COVID. And that was the reason for that. Now, even though I didn't see the email from the receiver, I tried to give them an opportunity yesterday to explain to me why we shouldn't go forward with this residential parking resolution. And they fell short, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm just going to piggyback off of what the mayor said. We are here to govern. The stuff that's in court, I don't have anything to do... We don't have anything to do with. We need to provide that service to our constituents here in the city of Chester. And I think Vijay mentioned that there was about three spots around here in the city of Chester that have been neglected. And the mayor have already given examples of, you know... And it's a public safety issue also. People get into arguments and can get into, you know... We haven't had that escalation, but, you know, can get injured as a result of that. I know I have family members and people relations that live in Nova Vista, that live over by Widener, that it's been an issue for years. And as I stated yesterday, when I was in the Public Affairs Office and Media, we used to park in... Because we couldn't park in the general parking lot, because that was for jurors, we started parking in the residential areas. In lickety-split time, there was no plan. Y'all talking about a plan. There was no plan. They put up residential parking signs. So why shouldn't Chester have them? Why shouldn't we service our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'd just like to say, too, I know there have been some incidents where trash has not been picked up on your trash day. But we have a collaborative working relationship with JP Mascara, and we have direct access with their supervisor. And if you call into my office, the 610-447-7700, and ask for Mr. Richard Knox or the Streets Department, we will make sure that we call the vendor. And nine times out of 10, they either go out, back out the same day, or they come out the very next day to collect where they've missed. And then some of this has happened because, like we said before, they've lost some of their employees due to COVID. Some of them have gotten sick. Some are afraid to return to work, I'm sure. But, you know, we've had a problem, a serious problem, during the pandemic situation. But if you call and let us know where... That your trash has not been collected, and most of you know me, I make sure that it gets done. So just give us a call and let us know what's going on.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think there was one more from Ms. Mosley from Delaware.
That... Let me look at that again, Your Honor. It says, the first was the trash contract.
Residential parking correspondence.
And then residential parking resolution.
Trash service.
And did council review the current contract even before considering the current resident parking?
Okay.
Thank you for addressing that.
Thank you, thank you. We can move on to the next one.
The next public comment was sent by Stefan Roots, address 926 West 9th Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. And the comment is, quote, "Wait for the parking vendor contract to be revoked before initiating residential parking zones."
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Roots. We said before, we've been placed here to govern, and we're going to do just that. One of the things I hope folks would begin to talk about and share with folks, and maybe Mr. Roots will do that with them. Del Cora has been fined by the EPA. I'm hoping the residents look at their bill. Over a million some dollars. They were fined because of dumping sewage water into our regular water. And if you look at your bills, you'll see that you're paying for that fine. I just had to say that because that's who Mr. Roots works for. Thank you.
Thank you. The next public comment, Kia Newman, 2707 West 6th Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. I was listening to the presentation of the prospective office building depot for delivering and supply today. We currently have an issue of no signs for height of tracker trailers coming off 95 now onto Highland Avenue. What happens is that once the trucks reach the railroad tracks on Highland right after 6th Street and realize they cannot fit, they often back up and come down 6th Street in the residential neighborhoods. We have had wires pulled, kids running to move it, a danger, and has been... Yes, I have called PennDOT for signs with no luck. Yes, I have called the city, who also told me I needed to call PennDOT, still no luck. What is the assurance with this new company that will have trucks who are not following signs, are not the correct trucking route? What is the penalty? What type of tax break are they receiving? And what type of tax benefits are residents getting? Is it split with trainers, since they will be on the border? What type of recruitment for the residents of Chester is being offered for employment as well as job training? What is the incentive?
The new company?
I believe there was a presentation several weeks back about a development for a trucking company.
Right, right, right. Okay, well, we will... We look to our engineer to... When it comes to those matters, and we will continue to work with our engineer, Mike Galante, and he will continue to work with the trucking company to make sure that our roads... You don't... You can't raise the railway, but we can lower our roads by the construction work that they do on our roads and our highways. And so, Mr. Galante, you want to address that?
Yeah, I can address that, yes. Yeah, so regarding the sign on Highland Avenue... Oh, great. Regarding the sign on Highland Avenue, Public Works will go out there, will check the signage, make sure that it's all in place. Regarding the trucking company, we're going to work... That is proposed, that proposed the land development on Booth Street. They're still going through the land development process. We're going to make sure that their trucking routes are set and that they don't go into the residential neighborhoods. And also, I believe even during their presentation, they did mention that they were going to look at Chester residents for a job placement. I believe they mentioned that at the last meeting, so.
Exactly. Chester first. Thank you, Mr. Galante.
The next and last public comment is from Adelaide Evans, 465 Bradley Street, Chester, Pennsylvania, 19013. Number one, hello, city council. One, why are we seeking to extend the contract with our current trash company for an additional $700,000? Was this opened up to other companies that could have been considered? Note, they are currently doing a very poor job of completing what is currently being asked. Two, is the council currently considered renewing the contract with Covanta? If so, why? We in the city need a better option. Three, what is going on with the abandoned open house on 291? Four, why is there a family living under the bridge on 291?
What was the last question?
Why is there a family living under the bridge on 291?
A family living under the bridge on 291?
Yeah, why?
There's... Let me just... Let's address that last one. There's only one... And I won't say it's a bridge, but to my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's only one slight overpass, and that's right here at Ether Waters Park. There is... There are no bridges on 291.
You talking about the Commodore Barry Bridge?
I don't know. To your question, we don't know, and we can... If you would be... Give us some more clarity on that, we will definitely look into it. To the bidder, the trash company that we have, JP Mascara, there were two bidders who came in and bidded on the city's trash. JP Mascara was the lowest responsible bidder. They were lower by $2 million. And we have a five-year contract. We're locked into a five-year contract, which means that there will not be an increase in that money, in those monies, or in that bill for the next five years. As far as the $700,000 number, that's incorrect. And I will let the person who made the comment correct themselves. That is incorrect. I think... What else did she say? I'm sorry.
Abandoned house on 291?
If you're talking about the building that's being worked on, that's covered up, there's a company down there that just purchased that building. They're rehabbing that building. The wood, wood is it? Wood, American Wood. American Wood, it's a company that moved from Delaware to Chester, hired Chester residents. They're expanding. They purchased that property, and now they're rehabbing that property. So in a short period of time, once again, you'll see... Once again, it's progress. Progress always looks a little distasteful in the beginning, but the end product, I am confident that the entire community, the entire community will love and see a beautiful building on that, in that area. And you'll see more Chester residents employed. Is that it, Mr.? Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. We're now going to go into our resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Resolution, whereas section 511.55, entitled Delegation of Powers of Article 511 of the Codify Ordinances of the City of Chester, allows council to designate residential parking permit area or areas by resolution within residential districts. Now, therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby designate the following areas within the city of Chester as residential parking permit zones, as further detailed on attached lists. Residential parking permit zone number one, Nova Vista section of the city of Chester. Residential parking permit zone number two, Sun Hill section of the city of Chester. And number three, residential parking permit zone number three, Widener North section of the city of Chester. Further, said designated areas are subject to review and amendment by Chester City Council from time to time as needed.
Is there an even further?
And it sure is. Even further. Said zones are contingent upon final review and approval of the city's solicitor.
So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilor Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the city of Chester has established a single-family affordable housing initiative with funds allocated by the Department of Housing and Urban Development through the Home Investment Partnerships Program. And whereas one of the eligible uses of such funds is the... Excuse me, is the creation of affordable housing through the rehabilitation of properties for sale to low and moderate-income families. And whereas the Chester Economic Development Authority, as the city's administrator for the home program, has received an affordable housing development proposal from Smooth Investments LLC requesting home funds in the amount of $70,000 to rehabilitate 1112 Curling Street for sale to a low-to-moderate-income home buyer. And whereas CETA has reviewed such proposal and recommends that the city consider the approval of the use of home funds for this project. Now, therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the use of home funds for rehabilitation of 1112 Curling Street and authorizes the Chester Economic Development Authority, CETA, to take the appropriate steps to ensure that the requirements of the home program are met.
So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested handicap parking zones. Number one, Jacqueline Ann Whitehead, 330 Townsend Street, Chester, PA 1913. Number two, Ada Richardson, 1938 McDowell Avenue, Chester, PA 1913. Number three, Wanda Reed, 1002 Curling Street, Chester, PA 1913. Asha Begum, 206 East 18th Street, Chester, PA 1913. Number five, Robert Butler, 314 Ward Street, Chester, PA 1913. Number six, Christopher S. Dorsey, 2404 Lindsay Street, Chester, PA 1913. Number seven, Donald Willis, 604 West 14th Number seven, Donald Willis, 604 West 14th Street, Chester, PA, 1913. Number eight, Perlene Fletcher, 829 West 7th Street, 2nd Floor, Chester, PA, 1913. Number nine, Nadira Beard, 840 Elsnor Place, Chester, PA, 1913. And number 10, Florence Freeman, 2125 West 4th Street, Chester, PA, 1913. Whereas, after a thorough investigation by the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, it has been determined that the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now, therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 300 block of Townsend Street, 1,000 block of McDowell Avenue, 1,000 block of Curlin Street, 200 block of East 18th Street, 300 block of Ward Street, 2,400 block of Lindsay Street, 600 block of West 14th Street, 800 block of West 7th Street, 800 block of Elsnor Place, and 2,100 block of West 4th Street in the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas QBS Realty LLC wishes to purchase and redevelop certain real property owned by the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester in the area of Tillman Street, Church Street, and West 2nd Street in the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, as shown on the attached Exhibit A for the development of 20 residential housing units for rent. And whereas, the Board of the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester has approved the Redevelopment Authority entering into a redevelopment agreement conditioned upon approval of the agreement by the City Council of the City of Chester. And whereas, the subject properties listed in Exhibit A are located in a redevelopment area in the City of Chester, and as such, the sale, lease, or transfer of such property is subject to approval by Chester City Council under the Urban Redevelopment Law at 35 PS Section 1709K. Now, therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it do, that it does hereby approve the redevelopment agreement with QBS Realty LLC for the development of 20 residential housing units for rent in the area of Tillman Street, Church Street, and West 2nd Street in the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester, CRA, entered into a redevelopment agreement with Sapphire Technology Group Incorporated for the former police station property at 4th Street and City Hall Place. And whereas, Sapphire Technology Group Incorporated has requested that its redevelopment agreement with CRA be dissolved in order for the property to be sold to Penn Home Healthcare LLC. And whereas, the CRA Board determined that the sale of said parcel would not have a detrimental impact upon redevelopment of the area. And whereas, the CRA Board approved the dissolution of the redevelopment agreement with Sapphire Technology Group Incorporated and approved entering into a new redevelopment agreement with new deed restrictions related to the proposed use of the property by Penn Home Healthcare LLC. And whereas, such approval is subject to the approval of Chester City Council as required under Section 1709K of the Urban Redevelopment Law. Now, therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the actions taken by the Board of the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester to dissolve the redevelopment agreement with Sapphire Technology Group Incorporated and enter into a new redevelopment agreement with Penn Home Healthcare LLC for the redevelopment of the property located at 4th Street and City Hall Place.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby adopt the amended park permit request application, which sets forth the fees and the terms and conditions for the use of the public parks within the City of Chester. Further, this policy will take effect immediately upon the passage of this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Charter for the Parking Authority of the City of Chester, CPA, was a term, was for a term of 50 years pursuant to the Parking Authority Law, 53 P.A.C.S.A. Sections 5501 through 5518. And whereas, the Charter for the CPA expired in 2016. And whereas, all of his real property and assets were transferred over to the City of Chester. And whereas, CPA is the owner of the parking lot located at Flower Street and Stadium Drive in the City of Chester, such parking lot being a portion of Berry Bridge Park. And whereas, FC Pennsylvania Stadium LLC has expressed an interest to extend its current license agreement for the use of the parking lot for certain limited periods under certain conditions. Now, therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve entering into amended and restated parking area license agreement with FC Pennsylvania Stadium LLC for the use of the parking lot located on a portion of Berry Bridge Park in the City of Chester. Further, it does hereby authorize the proper city official to execute the agreement for and on behalf of the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve in order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and as shown on expenditure approval list dated March 30th, 2021, attached hereto and made apart herof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number two, first reading was on March 24th, 2021. Ortenance number two of 2021, an ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the Codified Ortenesses of Chester, Pennsylvania.
I move that we pass Bill number two on its last and final reading.
And I move that we pass Bill number two on its last and final reading.
Are there any questions?
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Jacobs?
I was distracted, huh? Yes.
And Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Are there any further public comments, Mr. Solicitor?
No further public comments, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Just, I just want to say something in closing. Two things I want to kind of address. One, I want to address Cavanta, that is located here in our city. Cavanta has been a good partner to this community, and to this city, and to this government. Cavanta has been one of the few industries that has not been fined, fined by the EPA, and those fines being passed on to you, the residents. Cavanta hires Chester residents. Cavanta follows the rules and regulations. I wanted to be on record saying that because when people provide our community with misinformation, such as seeing multitudes of our children walking around with inhalers because of Cavanta. I have 13 grandkids. Not one of them has an inhaler. My children live here. I live here. We all live here. I see people in this room. Nobody has an inhaler. To try to gain political brownie points by passing on misinformation, false information, and lies to the community is simply wrong. And we don't need that kind of mess in our community. When I say mess, I'm talking about people who are spewing lies about our community and about the industry. We are surrounded by industries. Some communities, Marcus Hook Trainer, they have the industry living right on top of them. But we choose here to try to gain political brownie points by trying to point out an industry that we, when I say we, years ago, when it was trash to steam, fought and fought hard against to make sure that they followed the rules and regulations. And now we have in place a system whereby Cavanta, Cavanta follows the rules and the regulations. If they did not, they would be fined, just like Delkor was. And just like other industries have been fined here in our city. So I just wanted to be clear. And so, the other communities don't have to email me and ask me my thoughts. You hear them right now. If you choose not to bring your trash to Cavanta, that's your choice. But we choose to work with the industry here in our community that has become a good partner. Secondly, I want to thank each and every worker and unemployed worker, unemployed person, that worked here in City Hall. We work as a team. And we've been asked to build, Pharaoh has asked us to build bricks with no straw. I'll use a biblical term. And when I say bricks with no straw, we have no community liaisons, zero. Our community liaisons were our eyes and our ears in the community. We no longer have any community liaisons. Thomas White, Lisa Dennis, Fred Green, Nasir. These are real people. And because of the pandemic and because of the layoffs, and we were, and we're hoping that we can bring our people back. We don't have any right now. But I want to thank all of them and you for all of your hard work. We have one administrative assistant when there were five. Five fantastic young ladies that help us do our jobs. And now, we're down to one, and she's out. And the sad part now is, we got to answer phones, and I apologize. Let me be the first one to apologize. Because I know, I don't know how to operate those phones downstairs, so every now and then I might have hung up on somebody. I apologize right now. But we have to operate the phones. We have to give out food. We have to work in alleyways along with our workers. We sweep floors. We sweep floors. We pick up trash. We pick up branches. And we still govern. We still govern, even though we have to build, make bricks with no straw. We have one solicitor, and he has one aide. When we had three, and a secretary. Now we're down to one solicitor, and his right hand is ill. And so, we still have to make bricks with no straw. We have a depleted workforce. And, hm, spring is coming. Spring is here. And we have to deal with the streets, and we have to deal with our parks. We have to make bricks with no straw. And we're able to do so because we believe that teamwork continues to make the dream work. And so I want to thank all of you. There is no least to the best. We're all good. And because we're all good and because we all work together, we get the job done. And I want to thank the Chester community, the real Chester community, for your patience. I want to thank you for working with us. I want to thank you for when you come up every now, every now and then and say, thank you for your hard work when you can thank these council persons and these workers for the hard work they do during these hard and difficult times. And so we want to thank the Chester community because Chester is a very unique community. But it's the best community in the whole wide world. And so we thank you. And yeah, we have to make some tough decisions. But that's what we do. We govern. With that, counsel?
Mayor, I just want to say with regard to Cavanta, I've mentioned it before, but here in the City of Chester, I'm a member of the Chester Environmental Partnership. And from that organization, we decided to, to, to get four persons who work as inspectors, post-inspectors for the City of Chester. It's Mr. Rodney Robertson, Mr. John Johnson, Mr. John Shelton, and Mr. Richard Knox. And what they do, they have been trained by the DEP, and they have certain guidelines they have to follow when they go down to Cavanta to do the, the inspection there. And it's done on an annual basis. Mr. Knox and Mr. Robertson, they go out together, and they have their checklist and things to look for to make sure that Cavanta is meeting the requirements of the DEP and EPA. Okay? So we have those measures in place to go down and look for ourselves to see what's going on. And Cavanta has always been in compliance. And if anything came up, they, they were very expedient in terms of correcting whatever is noted. Okay? And I can tell you, for the past 12 years, no, not 12, maybe eight years, we've not found any violations there with Cavanta. And they've been a good partner. And, and yes, for the record, I do support them because I remember, you know, this was not something that we asked for, the City of Chester, you know, we inherited this, okay? We were told years and years ago that the trash to steam plant was coming to Chester, and you had to take it. We had to take it. I didn't hear much noise coming when it, coming out from the community when it was the county that said that we had to take a trash to steam plant in the City of Chester. So then you had organizations like the CEP, a watch group looking at these various companies on the waterfront. But I don't hear anything about the other companies, just Cavanta. And we have other companies that have been and are in violation of our environmental health here in Chester. So we need to be careful, and we need to look closely at everything, the big picture, not just zero in for political purposes on one company. Okay? And then, as, as far as the cleanup that was conducted during the month of March by my department and others, the police and fire, public safety... the police and fire, public safety parks, and the streets department, we all got together and went into various areas of our community to clean up. No community members came out to help. I think maybe one or two persons stopped, you know, and, and asked could they help and they just rolled up their sleeves and started working with us. You know, when I was growing up, my mother had me sweep off the porch, the steps, the sidewalks, the street, and we did the whole block. We picked up paper and everything, but that's not happening now. So we as community members, those of us who live here, we have to make sure that we're doing our part to keep the city clean. You see someone dumping, let us know. Call the police, that's what I did when I found someone dumping. And the police came, they took the truck and the people were arrested. So you have to take responsibility and look out for your own community. When we go to upland and, and park side, those other areas like that, you don't see trash in people's yards. But in Chester, I see some areas where they're throwing trash out the window down to their backyard and, and in bags, they're not putting the trash out properly. You know, we're supposed, supposed to have receptacles that we're putting the trash in. So I'm asking the community, and for those of us who are out there politicizing everything, you know, look, you know, help in your community and maybe reach out and help a senior who maybe can't get out in their, in their yard or what have you. You know, see what you can do for the Chester community in helping to keep it clean. So for those of you who have been helping, I want to thank you because I have plenty of people who call me because a lot of you have my cell phone number because I'm available twenty-four seven and you know it. You can call me, you can, you know, reach out to me, you see me in a supermarket, I'm all over the place. You see me and you stop me and, you know, you, you tell me what's going on. You have problems, you share it with me. And maybe it doesn't always pertain to my department, but it's good to know people who know people who know people. So I'm always available to help you. So thank you, community, for those of you who do help. And for those of you who are looking to criticize, shame on you.
Counselor?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mayor and counsel, I just want to re-give the public and COVID nineteen vaccine update. The Bureau of Health and Chester City Health Board will partner with Widener University on April the twenty-first, over fifteen doses will be available. Please call this number, six ten four four seven 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 zero zero, extension seven nine five five for an appointment. Just about all of our senior residential sites in Chester has received vaccines. Vaccines have been made available to them. Over six hundred seniors have been vaccinated. The partnership has been made possible by Crowe's Chester Medical Center. The city is, is partnering with Chespen with their new mobile unit for COVID testing and vaccine to go into areas that have trouble accessing COVID nineteen testing and vaccine. Scheduling for COVID nineteen vaccine is still available at City Hall in the Health Department. This service is provided by Keystone First. And here is one that I, I like them all, but here's one that I really like. The vaccine is being made available now to eighteen-year-olds and older. We've been dealing up until this point with people who were sixty-five and older. And if he was less than sixty-five, he had to have a medical condition, an acute medical condition. But now it's being opened up to eighteen-year-olds. Opened up to everyone and that, this will be starting April the thirteenth. I guess that's already started today. And then the other point is that I like is over seven thousand have been vaccinated in the City of Chester. Although, and now that doesn't, I mean, some of them have gone outside of the city. But we keep track of that through area code. But seventeen thousand thus far have been vaccinated. COVID nineteen testing is available in upland at the Army Reserve, urgent care in Chester, and will be available at Bethany Baptist on April the twenty-fourth from ten AM to two PM. And I would also, now this is, they gave me bullet points, I was reading from bullet points. I want to say that yesterday I got my first vaccine and it was at the Wellness Center at Ninth and Yarnell. And let me tell you, it's constantly, people are coming in and out. And it's not just people from the City of Chester. About a third of the folk were from outside of the City of Chester. And I think that's very important, especially with what the president is putting out that we need to be vaccinated, we need to be vaccinated in order to overcome this pandemic. And then I just want to urge that even after you get your vac- vaccine, continue please to wear your mask, practice six-foot social distancing, and washing your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilwoman?
I'd like to say good morning. I have a very serious problem when I see things that are not right, written right and properly about the City of Chester. And I feel that the citizens here should know that we have over thirty parks here in the City of Chester. Not what I read. Also, I want you to know that I have requested the summer food program which serves over five hundred children and adults here in the City of Chester and I have not received the response. And I'm really, really upset about that because when you keep trying to say, or whoever they are, that the people here in the City of Chester and council and mayor not doing their job properly, I feel that somebody else is not doing their job properly. And when you keep going back to Act Forty-seven, which that's what we were doing when we came in the door, I have a very serious problem with that. And when you're not telling the truth about how we work here, basically everybody sitting up here is educated in one way or another and we know how to run business. And we are running business here in the City of Chester. But when I, I'm looking for you the state of Pennsylvania to do their job. You need to bring some money down here, that's what you need to do. You doing all this cutting and taking away? How about adding some money down here to the City of Chester? We're the first city here in Pennsylvania and we need to be taken care of. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Let me end this by saying also, I want to thank the Stormwater Authority for their support in our cleanup efforts. They have partnered with us, they've been out there with their men and women, working with us. So I want to give a shout out to, to Dr. Strand and Executive Director and the members of the Stormwater Authority for all the hard work that they do and continue to do in this community. We appreciate it. Listen, we, we understand the climate, we understand what time, what type of, what time of year it is. And we're big boys and girls.
Oh, yeah.
And we believe in transparency and putting the truth on the table. And we will continue to do just that. We appreciate the opportunity to serve the people of Chester and we're going to do just that. With that said, we thank you all, this meeting is now adjourned.